I'd like to call a public hearing on item number one of our council agenda tonight, approve the action of the Chillicothe Planning Commission and rezoning the property located at 280 to 282 North High Street from residential office to general commercial. Mrs. Ames is the Development Chair tasked with this legislation. Nancy, if you want to have any opening remarks in them, we'll open it up to the public.
Thank you, President Reinhart. Yes, this is a public hearing to request the rezoning. And Dairy Queen is looking to expand an R.O. residential office zoning, which it currently has does not allow for carryout food and beverage establishments with drive-through facilities, but that is a permitted use in a general commercial zone. So that is the reason for the rezoning. We have had a Development Committee meeting about this rezoning, and it has had two reads before council. And I have received no concerns about the rezoning of this property from anyone, and so I would ask for council's support on this tonight. At this time, ask if there are any questions anybody has about this legislation. There will be sister legislation coming to the council in the new future for rezoning of 288 North High Street, which is adjacent to these parcels and the current Dairy Queen site. And I appreciate Mrs. Riddinger and Sharon Riddinger-Gill and Karen Gosman, who are here tonight on behalf of the Dairy Queen. These three parcels were part of the original request to the Planning Commission for rezoning. However, just recently, it was discovered that inadvertently the Planning Commission omitted in its request the one parcel where the Dairy Queen now sits. So this is going to be coming forward in the future for council's approval. We wanted to go ahead and move with these two parcels tonight, but the 288 was part of the original request, and it was just omitted. And that came to City Council with the omission in place.
Anybody from the public wish to speak or comment on this rezoning issue?
Thank you very much.
All righty. We will call this public hearing closed. Now we will call the Legislative Meeting of Chillicothe City Council to order. We'll call Mr. Clerk.
Ames.
Here.
Bonner.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Neal.
Here.
Patrick.
Here.
Showman.
Here.
Tatman.
Here.
Trutzel.
Here.
I'd like to ask everybody to rise and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, you've received your journal minutes from our last meeting in hard copy form and both electronic form. How were they?
Just approved the minutes.
Okay, I have a second to approve the journal minutes. One second. We'll call on approval of the journal minutes.
Ames.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Prohl.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Tatman.
Yes.
Trutzel.
Yes.
Okay, the minutes are approved. Reports of committees. Mr. Trutzel?
Thank you, Mr. President Reinhart. The Finance Committee has nothing on tonight's agenda. However, in our last council agenda, item nine off of the 13th Council agenda was tabled. It's my understanding at the time that $25,000 should not be needed until the Davis Project started in the spring of 2015. If we're talking with engineer Tom Day, this is not the case. Water Street must be leveled this year. That means the holes must be filled and heavy patching must be done before the street can be paved in the spring. Attorney Feeny advised me that $25,000 is available for that project. Therefore, I'd like to motion to waive Rule 13B and effect an untableting item nine.
You do have a second. Mrs. Ames. A second for the motion to untable. Roll call.
Ames.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Prohl.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Tatman.
Yes.
Trutzel.
Yes.
That item is untabled.
Okay, I would also like to motion to waive the three-day receipt rule so that this can be placed on tonight's agenda.
Seconded by Mrs. Ames, motion to suspend the rules to waive the three-day receipt rule.
That's not technically needed because it was distributed to council prior to the last regular meeting. It was just laying on the table. You just got it off the table.
Okay, so I don't have to waive the three-day receipt rule?
No, it's now before council. I've got it listed as item number 79.
Okay, thank you, John.
Very good.
And at the appropriate time, I also will waive the three-reading rule so we can get this project underway. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Trutzel. Any other reports of committees? Mrs. Neal?
Community Service has one item on the agenda. It's number six. That's to appropriate money for refund of deposits and overpayments to the refuse collection portion of the Utilities Department for the remainder of 2014. The amount to be moved from unappropriated to this fund is $4,800. There are already several bills that are passed due that are owed to citizens, so for that reason, I'll ask to waive the three-day receipt rule this evening. That was 14-124. I also, not on the agenda tonight, but have an assignment, 14-123, which is replacement bed for dump truck and a salt spreader. We had a meeting, first meeting concerning this on September the 24th, and we will have a second meeting Wednesday, November 2014, just to, that'd be November the 5th, just for a status update on the funding.
Thank you, Mrs. Neal.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports of committees? Mrs. Ames?
Thank you, President Reinhart. Development has four items on the agenda tonight. Item number one is the third reading of the ordinance to approve the rezoning of 280 and 282 North High Street, which we just had the public hearing for. I would ask council's support on this tonight. Item number two is the second reading of ordinance to designate a revitalization district within the city of Chillicothe pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 4301.81. This allows for the city to have additional liquor licenses for establishments where food and meals constitute not less than 75% of total gross profits. It is for restaurants, not bars. One permit per five acres is allowed with a maximum of 15 total permits. The designated area will mirror the downtown historic district as outlined in our city zoning codes. The total acreage is 79.76 acres, which allows us to have the maximum number of permits. A public hearing is scheduled for this item prior to our next council meeting on November 10th. Item number three is the second reading of ordinance to allow residential as a permitted use on other than street level in the historic district. This item also will have a public hearing before our next council meeting on November 10th. Item number five is the first reading of a resolution authorizing the appropriate city officials to apply for Ohio Public Works Commission Issue One grant funds for the year 2015 to be used for street construction and alley and curb ramp rehabilitation. This is grant money that we apply for every year. The amount the city is applying for is $220,000. Much of this money is used as matching money for odont projects in the city each year. As this is time-sensitive, at the appropriate time, I will ask to waive the three-reading rule and pass this tonight. And that concludes my report.
Mrs. Ames, any other reports of committees? Moving forward, reports of officials.
Mayor Yurcic. Thank you, President Reinhart. I'd like to announce that there'll be a citywide levy meeting Wednesday, this Wednesday evening at 6:30 PM with the Ross County Service Center. This will be the opportunity for one last chance for citizens that didn't make their respective ward meetings to come and hear our justification for intensive consent income tax. I would also like all council members to write letters to the editor in support of the levy, if they would. We've had two of those go in, and we did receive the editorial board's endorsement of the levy, and I think that the chamber endorsement of the levy is forthcoming. So I think we have some momentum here, and we need to ride this hard going into next Tuesday. I'd like to announce a budget meeting for this Friday, October 31st, 4:00 PM at Transit. I'll be going over a general overview of the...
Council Chambers.
Council Chambers. Oh, Council Chambers, okay. Thank you, Mr. Trutzel. And then Council Chambers, on Friday, 31st, 4:00. We'll go over the budget in summary form. You will be given packets of each individual department and adjustments made. This year, we had 61 separate budgets, and all of them had been done twice, one of the levies passes, one of the fails. So that one is concluding. We should be ready by Friday. Take a look at that. Next, I'd ask for support of item number one for the Planning Commission at the Dairy Queen location. The council's favorable vote on that. Also, the new item seven for the $25,000 for the Water Street repairs, so we'll hopefully get that done this year. And that concludes my report.
Mayor Yurcic.
Attorney Feeny. Thank you, President Reinhart. Just a couple of comments on tonight's agenda items. First, on agenda item six, I would ask for your support of the passage of that item tonight. What's happened is Utilities Department issues refunds, and there's enough money for water and sewer refund, but not enough money for the refuse portion, which has held up the issuance and quite a lot of refunds to taxpayers and consumers of their utilities. So if we could get that passed tonight, I'm sure we'd have many happy citizens. And item seven, the newly added item seven, there was some confusion. A couple of meetings, the last meeting, I suppose, and I'm glad that that has now been cleared up. And I would also support passage of that item tonight that pertains to the somewhat significant dip on Water Street and clearing that issue up. My last item of note is that as of tomorrow, we should have our RFP for new citywide financial software on the website, and the schedule that we've established should have proposals in and a vendor selected by the end of the year. So as you can imagine, I'm happy to get that out of basis, the rest of the department down in the basement. Other than that, if there are no questions, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Attorney Feeny. Ms. Law Director?
Thank you, President Reinhart. The Water Director's Office recently provided training on Fourth Amendment issues to active city and reserve officers. And I'd just also like to note that our office has noticed an improvement in the area of timely submission for legislation requests, and we'd like to thank council members for making that happen. So thank you, council. Makes our life a little easier. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Law Director. From the chair, this being the last meeting before the levy, as well, I'd like to give my, once again, public support for the levy. We had a very, very well-attended and lengthy meeting with the combination of the Fifth and the Fourth Ward, or, excuse me, the First and the Fifth Ward, now in school. It was well-attended, very, a lot of information, the feedback I've gotten from my neighbors that live in up on Hesswood was very well. The questions were answered, they understood the finances of things, and for the most part, seemed to, the details of what was presented in the meeting and the give and take of the question answers was very, very well. So would urge the public, please go out, support the levy. We need the dedicated road funds, that's obvious. That's when this whole thing started, we're trying to figure out how to find the funds for street paving. In the long term, a great compromise was taken. It was left to a 10-year deal, or after 10 years, if it passes, it'll go back to the voters, and the voters can decide whether it was worthy or not, which I think they will, when the streets are starting to be paved on a routine, regular basis. And at the same time, noticing of lack of funds going to be dropping down in the safety forces going into next year as well. So the decision was made to rule both of those levies together. It's quite controversial, some thought it should be separate. At the end of the day, the legislative body decided to go with them together, and I think it's a good thing, you know, to have all three fire stations up and running, have the fire equipment, have the fire department staffed at their current levels, and then allow the police department the same, with the resources to add officers, to continue to protect us, and definitely continue to fight the discouraging drug problem. So again, I think both portions of the levy are important, both portions of the levy are justified and valid, and I would urge the citizens to go out and support that. I also would urge the citizens to, as we go into the final week, any questions, concerns, want numbers, to contact the auditor, contact your council person, contact me, contact the mayor's office, who will be more than happy to answer those questions as we end this last week, going into this very important levy that's before us. So that's all I have. Next will be old business. Any council members, oh, no, excuse me, I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself. Audience participation. Any member of the audience wish to address council? Please step to the podium, give your name and address. Council rules will limit each speaker to five minutes and each topic to 15.
I don't take one. I'm here to give my annual report. My name is Donna Stevenson, and I live on Seminole Road. Anyway, this is my yearly report for the Little Red Caduceaus in the park. Almost every week, we have donations still coming in, memorabilia. Some lady called, she said, "I found a pencil." I thought, "Oh, wonderful, what about the pencil?" She said, "It's a D and F pencil." So I said, "I'll take it." So anyway, we've really, the people have been just absolutely super. We've got a new exhibit from Kicked Cereal Boxes, which I want you to see next May when we open up again. And anytime that you would care to give us three hours donation, why, that would be fun. I had 99 visitors before we opened up in May. We had folks from Bristol Village, Head Start, Cunt Scout PAC 14 from St. Mary's Church, the Deaf Signing Class from OU, and homeschool students. We had, the Deaf Signing Class was the fun thing, and some were totally deaf, some were learning to sign, and it was just very interesting. The teacher said, "You can talk faster, I can keep up with you." So I thought, "Okay, Lady Lauer, go on, you get with it there." We also had visitors from 14 different states. We were open 155 days. We had 795 hours donated by 25 volunteers. And the good news is, the total visitors from May 15th to October the 15th was 1,638. And I thought that was doggone good. So I was really, really pleased about it. We beat last year, so that's all that's important, you know. But some of the, like I said, the kids, Head Start kids, were good. I dressed up in my overalls and my hat, and they had, we had 11, 11 in the morning, and then they went, had their lunch, come back, and I had 20, 28 altogether, 17 or something like that in the afternoon. But I had help on that one, so anyway. And I also want to tell you, we had a super, Superman, Mr. Tatman.
Beth's help.
Your fault. Mr. Tatman is decorating the caduceaus for the Christmas, and he's really, he's really good at trees. He's got two, what, two trees wrapped?
Yeah, Beth wants another one done, and she's been helping wrap the trees, so.
Oh, have you? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that.
You like eating.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you very much. We sure appreciate it, and we're going to look gorgeous.
And Donna, thank you and the work that your volunteer group does, because I can remember when you guys, basically, we got that in, and you guys started that museum many, many moons ago, and it's a wonderful addition.
Mr. Trutzel, we're in the front page of the paper. Mr. Trutzel didn't want those D and Fs.
A long ago, yes.
That'd be 2002.
It's not that long.
No, I got the picture again. I'll bring it next time. He's very handsome, like.
Hey, good, thank you, Donna, for your report, and thank you for the volunteers that do that work.
We turned it into a luncheon at 17 each Saturday, and we really had a nice time.
Okay, good.
So we gave away some prizes because, what happened? Gave 90 some hours.
Wow.
We had John Lederberg, and he, oh, we gave him cider.
There he was.
He's been at hospital with the mayor. So we gave him a gallon of cider, and the next guy, let's see, who was that?
John Salzer.
Oh, John Salzer, yeah. He had 77 hours, I think it was, and Tom Dowler had 66 hours. But I just think it's really neat.
Yeah, it's weird.
His dad worked for the railroad, and he did too. He drove the taxi for the railroad. And he's obviously brought dozens and dozens of things. But the kicked cereal is what you really need to see. Years ago, I'm gonna tell you anyway, am I five minutes up yet?
Yep.
Years ago, hey, years ago, kicked cereal had, on the back of the carton, the box, was different kinds of engines and coal cars and different pieces from the railroad. And then they were done with their cereal, they cut it out, and then they folded it. And I had, some man gave us a lot, about 20, 25 of them, and I was cleaning them, and I never saw one speck of glue, nor did I see any scotch tape. This was back in 1940, that these were. And I got them on display, and I got them so that little ones could see it too. But they were folded, you know, slot, one slot had to go into another slot, you know, like we used to do years ago. But it was a neat, Mr. Joseph Betch, maybe you'll, maybe somebody would know him, I think he was a minister. But I called him, I greeted him, thank you, that of course, and then it took me two afternoons to clean him up. So when I called, I said, "Now, I'm gonna get this incident done." He said, "My wife would be thrilled," because he said, "She's been after me for 20 years. Get rid of those trains."
Well, they're coming to good use.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Donna. Any other members of the audience wish to address city council on any issues? Okay, all right, now moving forward, now we'll do old business. Any members of council have any old business?
Thank you, President Reinhart. I don't have any old business, and this is no reflection of that, but we need to excuse Patrick and Alicia Gray.
Absolutely. Do you have a second? Seconded by Mr. Trutzel to excuse Mrs. Patrick and Ms. Gray for this evening's meeting. Roll call.
Ames.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Prohl.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Tatman.
Yes.
Trutzel.
Yes.
His members are excused. Any other old business? Mr. Trutzel?
Thank you, President Reinhart. First of all, I want to thank Mrs. Stevenson, you're a breath of fresh air. I appreciate what you do, and so do the members of council.
Thank you very much.
Volunteers are hard to come by these days, and you do a great job.
Thank you.
And also, I'd like to thank the people that attended the first and fifth ward meeting the other night. The mayor did a great job, the folks at Soto, too. I have addressed one of their concerns, their concern that we would pave Hesswood and then decide to put the water lines in. Well, that's not gonna happen. The water lines, especially in the streets, are gonna be replaced before any paving is done. And that's the plan anyhow, that's what it looks like right now, and thanks to the mayor, I think we'll get that started. And I think it would make sense to do that, because we've been known to do things, Western Avenue numerous times, got paved and then watered, maybe bred in front of McDonald's or Bob Evans out there, and tore things up. But in the process over the years, we've put all those water lines in the yards on the south side of Western Avenue, so we won't have to put up with that problem again. But hopefully, we can do that for Hesswood and do it the right way. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Any other old business? Okay, moving forward. Criticians and correspondents, Mr. Clerk.
I have none to report on tonight, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Any new business? Mrs. Ames?
Thank you, President Reinhart. I have two things. Mrs. Patrick called me and asked if I would announce that she's having a Utilities Transit Committee meeting this Wednesday at 4:00 in the conference room. Two items will be discussed. Request from the auditor asking council to look into creating a stormwater utility fee and to unappropriate certain expenses with Nina Gardens and then transfer them in appropriate money from the sewer fund. So that's at 4:00 Wednesday in the conference room. And also, I would like to thank the J.C.'s and the Evening Lions for organizing the Halloween parade. It was awesome this year. The fire department had their open house, which was well-attended, more people than they've ever had. Then the Downtown Associates had the trick-or-treating, which had people all over the place, and then throngs of people for the parade, and J.C.'s and Evening Lions organized that. And thanks to the Police Department for policing it and the Service Department for cleaning up, and it was just beautiful weather and good turnout. It was really great, great parade.
Yes, it was. I'll second that. Any other?
That's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Ames. Any other new business? Mr. Bonner?
Thank you, President Reinhart. And along the lines of thank you, Mrs. Ames, putting out, I'd like to thank Mrs. Emily Schmidt, who did a great job organizing for the officials of this area to get the ride through the parade and the advance group. It was a nice time, and it was, like I said, as Nancy said, great turnout, couldn't have been better. Thanks for ordering the weather, whoever did that.
Any other new business? Okay, moving forward. Committee assignments and meeting dates. Since our last legislative meeting, the following committee assignments have been issued. 14-139 to the Human Resources Committee, a request for legislation to transfer funds from the civil service salaries and fringes to outside contracts. 14-140 to the Utilities Committee, a request for legislation to reallocate $5,620 to cover the remaining balance due to purchase a mechanical brush that's used to clean and prep fire hydrants for painting. 14-141, the Utilities Committee, a request for council to consider the creation of a storm sewer collection fee. 14-142, the Utilities Committee, a request for legislation to unappropriate certain expenses within the Nina Gardens Fund and transfer the appropriate money from the sewer fund, sub-s sewer fund, or sewer sub-funds, excuse me. 14-143, the Finance Committee, a request for legislation to appropriate $16,000 to the income tax refund account from unappropriated general fund. And 14-144, the Finance Committee, a request for legislation to authorize the City Council Finance Chairperson to act as deputy treasurer in times when the treasurer is out of town or unavailable. And that was a spinoff of the legislation that was tabled, requesting funds for that. And that's all we have to report. Legislation. Mr. Clerk.
Item one, third reading of an ordinance approving the action of the Planning Commission of the city of Chillicothe in rezoning property located at 280, 282 North High Street, Chillicothe, Ohio, from residential office to general commercial. Third reading.
Roll call.
Ames.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Prohl.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Tatman.
Yes.
Trutzel.
Yes.
Okay, that passes seven zero. The ordinance is adopted. Item number two.
Second reading of an ordinance designating a revitalization district within the city of Chillicothe, Ohio pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 4301.81 and declaring an emergency. Second reading.
And then further action, there will be a public hearing on November the 10th prior to our next legislative meeting. Item number three.
Second reading of an ordinance amending sections 1151.02 and 1151.03 of the codified ordinances of the city of Chillicothe, Ohio. Second reading.
Okay, once again, the meeting on further action on that, public hearing for that item will be prior to our next legislative meeting on November the 10th. Item number four.
Second reading of an ordinance appropriating $14,889 to cover fire department vehicle repair, fuel, and insurance costs for the remainder of calendar year 2014 and declaring an emergency. Second reading.
Item number five.
First reading of a resolution authorizing the appropriate city officials to apply for Public Works, Ohio Public Works Commission Issue One grant funds for the year 2015 to of Chillicothe to accept said grants if awarded and declaring an emergency. First reading.
Mrs. Ames?
I move to waive the three-read rule.
Seconded by Mr. Trutzel. Motion on the floor to suspend the three-read rule. Roll call?
Ames.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Prohl.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Tatman.
Yes.
Trutzel.
Yes, that motion carries, the three-read rules will be suspended. Roll call on the resolution.
Ames.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Prohl.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Tatman.
Yes.
Trutzel.
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries, and that resolution is adopted. Item number six.
First reading of an ordinance appropriating monies for refunds of deposits and overpayments to the refuse collection portion of the Utilities Department for the remainder of calendar year 2014, and declaring emergency. First reading.
Mrs. Neal?
I move to waive the three-read rule.
Do you have a second by Mr. Prohl? Motion on the floor to suspend the three-read rule. Roll call?
Ames.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Prohl.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Tatman.
Yes.
Trutzel.
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries, the rules will be suspended. Roll call on the ordinance.
Ames.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Prohl.
Yes.
Showman.
Yes.
Tatman.
Yes.
Trutzel.
Yes.
Okay, that ordinance is adopted. Item number seven.
First reading of an ordinance appropriating $25,000 for repairs to Water Street in preparation for the Ohio Public Works resurfacing project scheduled for autumn 2014, and declaring an emergency. First reading.
Mr. Trutzel?
Make, make a motion to waive the three-read rule.
Seconded by Mrs. Ames.
By the way, this is the result of receiving a grant that Mrs. Ames just, the legislation will apply for for next year. This is one we've received, this one for the P. project. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Roll call to suspend the rules?
Ames.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.